Good evening. Since it's six o'clock, we'll get started. Linda, could you please give the invocation?
This is the day the Lord has made. Let us rejoice and be glad in it. Psalms 1:1824. Thank you, Father, for this day and the days we have yet to enjoy. Help us every day to consider this blessing, and help us to appreciate what you have given us. Father, thank you for your presence here tonight, and thank you that we can join with you as we pray and as you release your blessings, your authority, and your plans for the city of Freeport and all who live here. Father bless Mayor Jody Miller as she takes a stand for this community. Thank you for equipping her with strength of character. Thank you for increasing her firm faith in you, and thank you for helping her maintain her resolve to see Freeport residents and businesses flourish, and giving her discernment on how to implement those plans that will achieve those goals. And, Lord, please continue to provide and protect her and her family. Father bless the city manager, Randy Bukas, all the city aldermen and city staff members here tonight. Father, thank you for putting together and calling out these people who are concerned for their neighbors and who take on extra work to help them. Lord, strengthen their resolve also and help them as they get the right things done. Provide them with the determination to find the right paths and plans and the insight on how to implement all that needs to be done that would benefit all in Freeport. Lord, tonight I would also ask for you to release the full measure of your love out into our community, and especially pour out your love to those that are feeling unloved, unworthy, unable, unwanted, hopeless, helpless, confused, misguided, bitter, afraid, and alone. Effect the hearts, minds, emotions, and spirit of each one. Open up their understanding, their eyes and their ears. Help them to see hidden lies and allow the truth to replace those lies. Please also bring people into their lives that will comfort, teach, and stand in faith with them. Thank you, Father, for your love today and every day. It's always available and always within reach. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Linda. Now we'll officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Mayor Miller?
Here.
Alder Person's Bornnaman?
Here.
Monroe?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Busker?
Here.
Shadle?
Here.
Mysick?
Here.
And Berberay?
Here.
Thank you. Could you please stand and join us with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Berberay?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Item number one is the approval of the agenda. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Ross. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Item number two is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on September 20th, 2021. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Ross, seconded by Alderman Parker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Public comments. The majority of those that have signed in are not on agenda items except for Julie Heiliger. Did you want to say something prior to the...? No, just for that? Okay. Then we'll move on to item number four, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is considered to be routine in nature and acted as one motion unless there's a member of the council that would like to provide further discussion for another topic. Is there anything, council? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of approving and placing on file the board and commission minutes from the historic preservation from July 20th, 21, the Foreign Fire Insurance Board from June 10th, 2021, the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners from August 24th, 2021, the Greater Freeport Partnership Monthly Report for September 22, 2021, also the approval of finance bills payable in the total of $643,059.23 and payroll for pay period ending September 25th, 2021, in the total of $573,317.89. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Busker, Mysick. That was first.
Okay. So we have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Mysick to approve the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Berberay?
Aye.
Bornnaman?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
And Mysick?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Ladies, if you'd like to join me, that would be great. These ladies all represent voices. So I'd like to make the following proclamation. Whereas more than 20,000 calls are placed on domestic violence hotlines nationwide every single day, whereas the impact of domestic violence is felt not only by individuals and families, but by communities and the nation as a whole, and whereas the city of Freeport joins with others across the state of Illinois and nationwide in supporting domestic violence victims and survivors, the advocates and the organizations who serve them, and holding offenders accountable in Freeport. Now therefore, I, Jody Miller, Mayor of the City of Freeport, by the authority vested in me, do hereby declare October 21, 2021, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Freeport. In recognition of the critical work being done by domestic violence advocates and allies in service of the survivors and the victims they serve, I encourage all citizens to actively engage in the scheduled activities and events sponsored by Voices and other organizations working towards an eradication of domestic violence. So thank you, ladies, for being here, and I'll give you a moment to say something if you'd like.
On behalf of Voices, we'd like to thank everybody and just raise awareness for the month of October. It is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Voices serves nearly 700 individuals per year, and those individuals are just like ourselves here today. And the only way to reduce and eventually eliminate domestic violence is to speak of it and to normalize it and reduce the stigma. There is help out there. It's available, and everyone deserves help, and our survivors deserve to be believed. So please help us raise awareness, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Item number five is the Recognition of Service Awards. Manager Bukas?
Thank your honor. I'm going to turn this time over to Fire Chief Liggett.
Adam, would you join me? Your family's welcome to come too. The city would like to recognize Adam LeBeever. Adam started with the Freeport Fire Department after 17, of 2011. He is a firefighter and one of my engine operators. And he's been a paramedic. He's on our technical rescue team. He's also been the project principal for the first due pre-planning program and fire inspection program. He's done an excellent job helping us with that. Then Adam also jumps in on projects around the station. He helped build our new EMS cabinets in the station. If you remember a post on our fire department Facebook page regarding the flag that we have hanging in our stairway made of old retired fire hose, Adam was one of the project principals on that also. So he helps beautify our station, and he works very hard to keep the department running, and I appreciate your service. So celebrating 10 years of service, here's a certificate of recognition, and then also some downtown Freeport bucks if you can be able to grab a copy and take a kiss.
Thank you, Adam. Item number seven is the second reading of Ordinance 2021-44. Could you please read this?
Ordinance amending section 806.07 pertaining to the licensing of alcoholic liquor establishments regarding additional filing fee for late applications.
Thank you. Manager Bukas?
Thank your honor. We've had a problem with a number of liquor license holders being late with their renewal applications, and the Liquor Commission discussed this issue at their September 9th, 2021, regular meeting. And they are recommending that the city council amend section 806.07 of the mystical code to require a $20 per day penalty for any liquor license that is not complete by the deadline date. And staff's recommendation is that council adopt ordinance number 2021-44.
Counsel, is there any questions or concerns you want to address? I know we've spoken about this topic several times. If there's nothing further, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Berberay?
Aye.
Bornnaman?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
And Mysick?
Aye.
The ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number eight is the second reading of Ordinance 2021-46. Could you please read this?
Ordinance approving and authorizing the city to enter into a first renewal to lease agreement with Peter Albert regarding 103 to 111 South Liberty Avenue.
Manager Bukas?
Thank your honor. Peter Albert is currently leasing the first floor of what we call the Metalclad Riley Building. The city owns, and Mr. Albert desires to lease the first floor for another year. The lease agreement requires Mr. Albert to pay $1,000 to the city for the one-year lease, and staff recommends city council adopt ordinance or approve ordinance number 2021-46.
Counsel? Madam Clerk, would you please take the role in the passage?
Berberay?
Aye.
Bornnaman?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
And Mysick?
Aye.
That ordinance passes eight to zero.
And item number nine is the second reading of Ordinance 2021-47.
Ordinance authorizing the disposal of certain personal property owned by the city. In this case, the police department has guns to be disassembled and disposed of.
Deputy Chief Davis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing has changed since the first reading. These are the guns that come to the PD. They're turned in by the public and/or awarded by the court for destruction.
Questions? Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Berberay?
Aye.
Bornnaman?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
The motion passes eight to zero.
And we'll move on to resolutions. Item number 10 is the adoption of Resolution 2021-55. Could you please read this?
Resolution setting the date and hours for trick-or-treating.
Manager Bukas?
Thank your honor. Annually, the city council sets a date and time for trick-or-treating. In 2020, because of coronavirus, certain guidelines were put in place to help stop the spread of the virus. With the pandemic still active in our area, these guidelines are still in place for 2021. They include only approach houses that have their porch lights on. Two, mask face covering should be worn for all participating in trick-or-treating, including treaters, guardians, and candy givers. Three, gloves are recommended for all residents. Four, maintain six-foot social distancing and keep nine family groups to five or less. Six, families who are those who have quarantined together may stay together. Groups should not intermingle. Number of people. Eight, wash and sanitize hands often, especially after trick-or-treating. And nine, sanitize all candy wrappers upon returning home. Staff recommends the city council adopt Resolution 2021-35 setting the trick-or-treat hours of 4:30 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Sunday, October 31st, 2021, and the proposed guidelines and expectations as noted.
Alderman Parker?
Motion to approve. Second.
Well, before you, we have a motion from Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Ross, to adopt Resolution 2021-55. Is there any discussion, counsel? Madam Clerk?
Berberay?
Aye.
Bornnaman?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
And Mysick?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted eight to zero.
And item number 11 is the adoption of Resolution 2021-56. Could you please read this?
Resolution authorizing execution and amendment of Downstate Operating Assistance Program, known as DOP, grant agreement for fiscal year 2022.
Thank you. Director Heinz?
Thank you. The Downstate Operating Assistance Program, or DOP, requires that we approve this resolution to authorize the grant agreement every year. The total amount that we're getting for this program is $1,261,043, and that's reimbursable amount. We don't typically get to that high of an amount, but we can if we do spend that much. So staff would recommend that we approve this, the resolution to authorize the execution and amendment of the agreement.
Questions, counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Busker?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Mysick. Any further discussion, counsel? Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Could you repeat the motion in second first, please?
Busker and Mysick?
Thank you. Berberay?
Aye.
Bornnaman?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
And Mysick?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Item number 12 is the adoption of Resolution 2021-57. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving a system security and emergency preparedness plan regarding the Pretzel City Transit Program.
Thank you. Director Heinz?
Thank you. The city of Freeport has contracted with the Senior Resource Center's Operational Services for the Pretzel City Transit Program since 2018. IDOT, earlier this year, conducted a compliance remote desk review March 31st, and we are required to have a system security and emergency preparedness plan approved by resolution. The authority for implementing the SSEPP resides with the SRC's Board of Directors, but the city needs to adopt the plan. The SRC's Board of Directors approved this plan in April of 2021, and it was revised in June of 2021. So this is just a requirement by IDOT as part of our review, and so we would recommend approval of the adoption of the plan.
Anything, Alderman Parker?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Busker to adopt Resolution 2021-57. Anything further, counsel? Madam Clerk?
Berberay?
Aye.
Bornnaman?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
And Mysick?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted eight to zero.
And item number 13 is the adoption of Resolution 2021-58. Could you please read this?
Resolution authorizing and approving an intergovernmental agreement with FEMA for the pre-disaster mitigation grant program.
Director Heinz?
Thank you. So the city received notice that FEMA approved our 2019 pre-disaster mitigation grant in August. On Tuesday, September 27th, we received the intergovernmental grant agreement from the Illinois Emergency Management Agency, which is required before we can begin implementation. So in order to move forward with the PDM Acquisition and Demolition Program, the resolution to approve the agreement must be approved by council and submitted to the state. After it's sent to IEMA, we will be assigned us throughout the project. We're intending to talk with that manager and then set up, schedule in-person meetings with residents who are signed up to participate in the program. So we would recommend approval of the resolution for the intergovernmental agreement so we can move forward with this.
Mayor?
Alderman Ross?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Ross, seconded by Alderman Busker. Any discussion, counsel? Madam Clerk?
Berberay?
Aye.
Bornnaman?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
And Mysick?
Aye.
And that resolution is adopted eight to zero.
And next, could you read the next motion, please?
Motion to approve purchase order for towable air compressor.
Director Boyer?
Thank you, your honor. The utility division utilized a towable air compressor for field operations. The current air compressor is unreliable and in poor condition. Staff received quotes for a new 185 CFM solar compressor from three equipment dealers, JR Supply, Westside, and DSC. JNR was the lowest quote at $24,750, and funding for this compressor is through the Water and Sewer Equipment Fund. Staff requested council approve a motion to allow the purchase of the towable air compressor.
Alderman Parker?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Ross. Any discussion, counsel? Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Berberay?
Aye.
Bornnaman?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
And Mysick?
Aye.
The motion passes eight to zero.
And could you read the next motion, please?
Motion to issue a quitclaim deed to Dickwes Building Corp. for property located at 447 South Locust Avenue.
Director Heinz?
Thank you. The city acquired 447 South Locust by quitclaim deed in February of 2019, and the structure was demolished this year. The neighboring property at 521 West Main, which is the Northern Illinois Podiatry Office, inquired about purchasing the vacant lot after the structure was demolished. The owner of Northern Illinois Podiatry at 521 West Main has agreed to purchase the property for $1. Upon approval from council, they will record the quitclaim deed with the county. So we would recommend approval of the sale of this property. I would add, too, that they were having trouble getting their insurance renewed before that property was demolished. So I think overall this would help them if they were to expand that as well.
Counsel?
Motion to issue.
We have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Parker. Discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
That was Busker, Parker?
Yes.
Berberay?
Aye.
Bornnaman?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
And Mysick?
Aye.
The motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to department heads. Finance?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
Thank you. Community Development?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Public Works?
Just two things, your honor. Starting October 12th, the fall leaf season begins, so we'll begin picking up leaves. I would like to ask residents to ensure that they're making sure that leaves are in a place in a continuous row on the curb line. The only leaves are accepted, so please don't place grass clippings or yard waste or sticks or brush in the pile. It can clog up our equipment. And please not park vehicles in the immediate vicinity of leaf pile or cover the sewer or the stormwater inlets with leaves. So we'd also like to remind residents that they can take woody yard waste to the Timber Industries location at the City Woodlot on Walnut across from the county fairgrounds Monday, Wednesday, and Friday during regular business hours. This is free for the residents and any contractors in the city of Freeport that are doing hauling woody yard waste. In addition to that, if there's some reason why the gate's locked or whatnot, they can always take it to the city yards that's still available. So just want to let you know that. And then my last thing is we're starting our fall maintenance, hydrant maintenance program. It's beginning on October 12th. This may cause a little cloudiness or whatnot in your water as we're flushing some of the hydrants. We plan to be done with the program by November 8th, so just keep an eye out for that.
Thank you. Fire?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, I wanted to remind everyone that we're currently taking applications until October 29th. Watch the city's, or excuse me, the Fire Department Facebook page for some open houses for recruiting. Also, we had a really nice open house this last Thursday, September 30th, at Central Fire Station. We had quite a few folks in attendance, displayed fire apparatus, had our smokehouse operating, did an extrication demonstration with a car, and then had a mini obstacle course for some of the kids to try out and do some of the things that we do as firefighters, like drag a rescue dummy and operate a hose and crawl through a confined space. And it was pretty neat. It was well-received, and it was a well-attended event. Also, District Chief Kurt Timmer's last full day of work is October 7th, so if you're out and about, stop by the station and say hello to him. And that's all I have to report this evening.
Are you going to have a ceremony?
Kurt has requested that we do not have a flag ceremony, and we're going to honor his wishes, but again, if you're out and about and you happen to stop by, we'd enjoy having you. Say hello.
Okay, thank you. Police?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would also point out that the police department is accepting applications through the end of the week. And I'd also like to bring notice that our police department, since September 20th, has been doing targeted enforcement and patrols in an effort to bring down the crime. Since then, we've recovered eight firearms and arrested six people for weapons charges in just that short amount of time, as well as a few other older outstanding kind of firearms warrants, so that is all.
Thank you. Library?
Thank you, Mayor Miller. I just want to say that tomorrow is our most popular day at the library, Slime Day, from 3:30 to 5:00. So if you want to come and make a mess at the library and leave the mess there, but get to take the slime home, come and join us. Thank you.
Thank you. IT? Thank you. City manager?
Thank your honor. Today, we applied for a Illinois Special Bridge Program grant in an amount of $3.98 million. This is for the Hancock Bridge over the Pecatonica River. We applied for the last couple of years, haven't been successful. This is an 80/20 match with the city's contribution of roughly $797,000. We're applying today for the year 2027. That's how far ahead we have to apply. So even though the bridge needs work now, we're going to have to put it off for a few more years. Also, staff met with Nycor Gas regarding a gas line they have that runs under part of our runway at the airport. They're projecting to, well, they're going to have to replace a 22-inch pipe with a 24-inch pipe that's about 1,000 feet long. They're going to need an easement from us because of the relocation that we're looking at to take it outside the runway area. We're meeting again with them in January to kind of assess where we are, to see how much of it can be bored versus open cut, and they're looking at a 2023 project for this. And that's all I have for tonight, your honor.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring counsel's attention to a couple of things. Last Friday, there was an event at the Art Plaza that was a really nice event. It was the dedication ceremony for the first set of sculptures that were put up. There's like three boats that are up on, looks like oars, so it's really quite a neat concept there. And so this coming Friday at 4:00 is the unveiling of the second sculpture. I was a part of that committee, but I can't tell you right now what that second sculpture looks like. I forgot. But anyway, if you're not busy and want to join us, it's at 4:00 at the Art Plaza. And then just as a reminder, next Monday is Columbus Day, so the offices will be closed, and we won't have counsel on Monday, but we will have counsel on Tuesday. And a reminder to come at 5:00 because it's our first finance committee of the whole as well. So just a couple of reminders for you there. So that's all I have this evening. And Alderman Berberay?
Nothing, your honor. Nothing tonight, your honor.
Thank you. Alderman Bornnaman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge and thank Deonte Collier-
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge and thank Deonte Collier, Leon Ishman, and Walter Hayward, and all those that attended. And we're also involved in Stop the Violence Community Rally that took place last month, September 29th. And I really want to encourage them for the work they're doing. And I also want to acknowledge and thank the police department for doing what they're doing. Those numbers are staggering. Six arrests, eight firearms within, within a week or so is progress. Thank you.
And Alderman Monroe?
Nothing this week, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Ross?
Nothing, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Parker?
Just to repeat, the police department did a great job in getting them guns and the violence, and we got to keep her up. And thank you very much. Nothing else, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Busker?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Shadle?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
And lastly, Alderman Mysick?
Nothing additional. Thank you.
And that leaves us with public comments. We have a few that were signed up. We'll start with Mary Blake.
I'm Mary Blake, and I am speaking on the proposed trap neuter and release program. I only heard about this last Tuesday night at our League of Women Voters meeting, so I couldn't comment on it before it happened. I am opposed to the trap neuter and release. Neutered cats are as much danger from injury or death from cars or other animals and are as big a nuisance from defecating in my flower garden or eating the birds at my feeder as an un-neutered cat. So-called feral cats are not a native species. Cats are domestic animals. These cats or their parents were someone's pet that was dumped. If people think there is a cat colony where the cats are being cared for, they are much more likely to dump their pets. I think that the way to control the loose cat population is to hold their owners responsible for them. There is no feral dog colony, as far as I know, because dog owners are required to license and microchip their dog. Therefore, it is easier to trace that dog back to the owner if it is dumped. It's time to give the same protection to cats. As of January 1st this year, the state of Illinois requires that all cats have rabies vaccinations. Since they already have to go to the veterinarian, why not license and microchip them at the same time as well? Freeport City Ordinance 612.02 states it is unlawful for any cat to run at large, but you are okaying these cats to run at large. I would propose trapping and adopting or euthanizing loose cats. I know no one wants to euthanize a healthy cat, but loose cats are much more likely to die a prolonged and painful death from being hit by a car or attacked by another animal. Permitting this trap neuter release goes against your own city ordinance and is not very kind to the cats. Please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Next, we have Juliette Montero.
I'm speaking on behalf of the Northwest Illinois Audubon Society. This is in response also to the proposed trap neuter release program. The Northwest Illinois Audubon Society is opposed to this decision made by the city. For more than a year, our chapter has been working with the city on a statewide initiative of Bird City Illinois. A resolution in support of Bird City Illinois Initiative was unanimously passed on September 7th, which stated that the city finds that it is in the best interest of the city and its citizens to show its support for the Bird City Illinois Initiative. We believe that the decision to support TNR is in conflict with the Bird City resolution and did not provide our chapter an opportunity to discuss or help the city with alternatives to TNR. We have a wonderful opportunity to educate the community about free-roaming cats first, rather than resort to practices such as TNR that have been shown not to work in the long term and are devastating to bird populations. It is estimated that cats kill 1.3 to 4.0 billion birds and up to 22.3 billion mammals annually. TNR would retain cat populations rather than reduce their populations, and that would be against our mission and the Bird City Initiative to protect and conserve birds. There is scientific evidence that TNR is not effective, and we believe that the city also did not review information on evidence against TNR to allow the City Council members to make an informed decision. We have sent emails to all City Council members, providing them links to peer-reviewed research. The American Bird Conservancy, which is the leader in Bird City America that all of the bird cities, such as ours, are based on, and supports the cats indoors initiatives instead of TNR. At the state level, Bird City Wisconsin, Bird Town Indiana, Bird City Minnesota, and Bird City Texas do not support TNR. TNR increases risk for public safety by increasing the spread of diseases such as toxoplasmosis, mosquito-borne diseases, and cat scratch disease. The American Veterinary Medical Association opposes free-roaming cats and promotes keeping cats indoors as well. Organizations such as PETA, People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals, the National Wildlife Federation, and many other conservation groups oppose TNR. We would like the City Council members to discuss the decision on TNR, and we would welcome the opportunity to work with our chapter in determining alternative approaches that will be better for the city, citizens, and birds and other wildlife.
Thank you, Juliette. Next, we have Kathy and John Krieger.
Hi. We live up at 1222 South High Avenue. We've been having some really bad issues up there. Just this weekend alone, we have some thugs that hang out, for lack of a better word. We, we share our driveway with the property next to us, which is 1230 South High. That property is empty, and it's boarded up. Now, I have complained about this. These people, they were there hanging out again today. I couldn't hardly get out of my driveway. They bring their, our trash pickup is on Thursday. They were there over the weekend working. They put their trash out last night, and they're, it sits till Thursday. So I'm trying to get out, and there's a car sitting there and sitting right in the middle of the street so that I couldn't get out. And the thing is, is that, and they do that a lot. They'll park right there on the edge of the driveway, but it's her property. And this Friday night...
This area's been known to be a bad area for these young, young black gentlemen to hang out up there. And they just, they just continue to hang out up there. I asked them to please go somewhere else, and all I got was static and...
Mouth?
They said, "If you want to be the police, the police are hiring," you know? And I, I just don't know what to do. The, the police work with me. I call the police, and they come up and they say, "You know, if you need to call us, you can get, call us." But it's just constant. And there's, I don't know what to do with it.
Well, on Friday night, when he came home, they had the driveway blocked. That was the same night that we ended up calling the police because he got into an argument with the people. And the thing is, is that those people don't even live up there.
There's young, young, young kids that come up there and they don't live there.
They just hang out, and there was three bottles of what, Hennessy?
And hang out there because the house is boarded up.
Right. And I believe that unless it's changed, there's an ordinance on the books that says if a house is boarded up and there's been, you know, criminal activity. Well, this last summer, they were peeing on that house. It was Sunday afternoon, broad daylight. We have kids in that neighborhood. My grandkids come over there. And these people that have this house, they couldn't care less. They, they live in Chicago or somewhere. Alls they were worried about, they put a fence up so that we couldn't turn around in their driveway, because this is a shared driveway. And there's enough room up there for four cars.
I'd just like to know if there's anything against, you know, that they can do about this loitering.
Yeah. I mean, we're the property owners. We pay property taxes. And these people, it's like they have more rights than we do.
And they leave trash laying all over?
Yeah. That's the other thing. There was bottles of Hennessy Friday night.
The police seen the bottles?
Yeah. So anyway, we're just hoping that something can be done, because this has been going on for two years. First, it was one house, and now that Christian Castle came home, and now it's him and his thugs. So...
Well, we, we appreciate you sharing that with us, but I didn't catch what your address was.
Ours is 1222 South High Avenue.
Okay.
And I'd also like to say is that there's some houses on Carroll Street. One is 1245 South Carroll that's been condemned for, I think, about six years. And there's another house at 1217 that's empty.
Okay.
There's been a...
Just because your time has expired, you're more than welcome to call and, and discuss this if you'd like, so you don't get cut short. So thank you for sharing that stuff with us. Are there any other public comments? Tommy?
President Heim, we're going to miss you.
Thank you, Tommy.
Jolie, are we going to have something for...
Well, we'll have to talk about that.
Sometimes.
We'll let you know, Tommy.
Oh, you'll give me a call with me? No?
We'll, we'll let you know. You, you, you call, you call often. We'll be able to connect up with you on that and let you know.
And I told Travis Davis, you did a good job coming today.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Well, seeing none, we'll move on to item number 21, which is executive session. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
This is just 2 and 11, right? Pursuant to 5 ILCS 122C2, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. And pursuant to 5 ILCS 122C11, litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
The motion made by Alderman Ross, seconded by Alderman Mysick. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Burberry?
Aye.
Bornhamon? Monroe?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
And Mysick?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.